The time five o'clock. Same. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, ready.
Okay.
Recording?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brooklyn Select Board, and this is the meeting of the Select Board for May 23, 2023. We're going to be going into the executive session in just a second. We'll be going to executive session for purposes of collective bargaining because a open meeting would compromise the board's position with respect to the bargaining issues. So also going to be going into executive session for the purpose of approving executive session meeting minutes for May 9 and May 16. After executive session, we will return to open session about 5 o'clock. All in favor of going into executive session, please indicate by an aye. Mike, I'm trying, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Chair vote, aye.
Okay, for those of you who are in the attendee list, I'm just gonna have to ask you to leave and join us again at 5 o'clock.
Devin, did you get my voicemail, by the way?
I was gonna text you. I was running around like a chicken with my head cut off. Thank you.
Okay, just as, yeah, just as long as you have that heads up.
I did. Thank you for the heads up. And I'm just gonna ask folks in the attendee list one more time to please voluntarily leave the meeting. If I do want to remove you, you will not be able to rejoin with this email address, and you'll need to register using a secondary email address. Okay, everyone's gone now. I have to work the bathroom off of me.
Here you go.
The webinar is.
Are we going live?
We are.
Okay, good evening. This is Bernard Green, Chair of the Brooklyn Select Board, and this is the meeting of the Select Board for May 23, 2023. Let's start off with any updates, comments, reports of the Select Board. No?
Okay.
Okay.
A reminder, more of the aim of observances.
Yeah.
It's coming Saturday. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, it's Monday.
Monday, yeah, of course.
And I said, okay, right?
And I know that several of us, not all of us, on this board and attended and often by year attendance. And it's a, it's well worth people considering attending it, especially if they have not attended it in the past. There is a group of folks and Phil Namborri, our veteran secretary, is among them and sort of in the lead among them who are really keeping the flame alive for observances of these types that honor those who sacrificed their lives for our country and service to their country. And it's a, it's an event that has affected me in years when I attended it, and I hope so others will. They've opened themselves up to the possibility it might affect them and give them a people appreciation of what is being honored on that day. So thank you for just allowing me to make know that the folks might not be thinking about it right now, but might want to put it in their plans.
I would say that a lot of people who don't see on a regular basis attend that, and they appreciate greatly this speech by Select Board members. Any other updates? Okay, public comment.
I should argue the intro.
It is right.
Good. Thanks to all who are going to join us for this public comment and opportunity for us to hear from your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. We have a few rules. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time that you may, if you like. We encourage you to refrain from personal attacks and from addressing personnel issues during your comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions, and we may be able to provide a quick answer, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and respond to the email. And we'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. When the time is up, please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you're welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts. You can write your piece down. And Devin, who started on our list?
At this time, there are 10 virtual attendees and two in person. To meet everyone, I can public comment. Susan, you can go ahead.
Okay. I'm just, where is the camera? Right here. Okay, hello, everyone. My name is Susan Park, town meeting member from Precinct 17. I'm here asking you to stay the course and vote no action on Warren Article 17's amended language 401 license. The fiduciary committee last night decided not to revote because this amendment was already made and voted down by AC from a few weeks ago. To reiterate the stats on valid question three, question three won overwhelmingly on May 2 with 7,558 yes votes and 4,754 no votes. With this win, the statute posted on May 12 and is now in effect as law. Town Council has made it very clear they are still not worried about a lawsuit winning. There was some misinformation on the AC report that was retracted, and another report will be posted. What we have found is this. Again, the regulations for Chapter 180 will not be issued until November of 2023, and there's no way of knowing whether or not Brookline's current efforts meet the new procedures and policies to support social equity standard. So the final regulations may show that Brookline is in full compliance, so we don't want to make any decisions based on speculation. Even if under the future regs, there is some future finding that we are not in compliance, Chapter 180 regs cannot compel municipalities to issue or create any new licenses. For all these reasons, please vote no action on Warren Article 17's amended language 401 license. Now, back to the vote on May 2. May 2, there was a turnout with the highest turnout in town election in the past 15 years, and the turnout of over 12,000 voters was a 30.1% turnout rate, nearly twice the average turnout of the previous 14 town elections. The people voted, and I hope we will stay the course from the way you voted before. Because yes on three won by 61.5%, which is a 23% margin, was one of the highest margins of any contested ballot question in town in many years. And for many years, the Select Board's reason to issue more licenses was because of the 2016 vote, and 61% of Brookline voted illegal cannabis. But now that we know that 61.5% of Brookline won a cap, they have spoken, so please vote no action on the amended Warren Article 17. And again, we won by 2,804 votes. So I hope that, I hope, did you say 30 seconds? Okay. So I hope you tonight will continue the course and vote the same way you did last week and vote no on Warren Article 17. Thank you for your time.
Bridgette, any other comments? I'm going to promote Perry Grossman. Hi, Perry. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Okay, great. Thank you. Perry Grossman, precinct number, town meeting member, precinct five. I have kids at Lincoln and the high school. I'm on the Bicycle Advisory Committee and safe routes to school. I'm actually speaking in favor of Warren Article 17 because I believe it supports market competition and equity opportunities. Section 11 of an act relative to equity in the cannabis industry states that host communities shall promote and encourage full participation in the regulated marijuana industry by people from communities that have been disproportionately harmed by marijuana prohibition and enforcement. And I think Brookline should try to be a leader in equity and support this state law. Now, yeah, many people will point to the recent vote, and I think it is important to consider that. But it's also important to consider how it was framed. Warren Article 15 was framed in the fall as a element of democracy. But we need to think about the elements of equity and the opportunities in this marketplace. So thank you for considering that.
The next person signed up for public comment is Wagner Oji. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Good evening. My name is Wagner Oji. I am a town meeting member for Precinct 15. I'm here tonight to encourage the Select Board to vote no, no recommendation on Warren Article 17. Just like the Select Board voted last week, there's nothing new. The voters, the voters spoke clearly overwhelmingly in my precinct 15. The voter, we, the vote was 611 versus 255. It was a clear message that the voter sent out to everyone. They do not want any more cannabis storefront. When we, with regard to equity, I am all about equity. Let's, let's talk about equity. What about equity on our educational system? What about equity in contracts? The town of Brookline has a total of $404 million revenue and spent on contract for services. Let's talk about that. Why don't we find a way so that we can have equity in those contracts? Why don't we talk about equity in our educational system? Just, we talking about equity for cannabis? It's, it's gonna benefit one person. And I'm all about equity. What about our little brown kids, black and brown that come in through the system? Why don't we discuss that? What about law enforcement? Let's look at the law enforcement activities encounter with people of color. Why don't we talk about equity in that regard? So if we want to talk about equity, please join me to talk about equity in, in contracts, in law enforcement, in education. I will join you. I will do whatever I can to support that proposal. But right now, the voters, they spoke. They say enough is enough. We don't need anymore. We should respect the will of the voter. Thank you.
I'm promoting Jane Doe. Hi, Jane. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Hello, I'm a journalist for Black and Brown News. I'm here to clear up a lot of misinformation that's been going around and to the town meeting members that have been perpetuating this misinformation and harassment. We will be writing about you in our next article with a slew of your false and harassing emails that have been submitted to BMBN. Black and Brown News, also known as BMBN, is not Black and Brown Club, also known as BNBC. We are a team of independent investigative journalists that have taken an interest in the corruption in Brookline and how it affects the Black and Brown community. BNBC is one of our sponsors. BNBC sponsored BMBN by giving us access to their Canva so that we may use the full range of premium features that they have access to. We did not have access to these features with the free trial. BNBC graciously allows us to use their account on this media creating and editing platform for our newsletter, among other media content. Thank you, Black and Brown News.
The next person raising their hand for public comment is Jennifer Doe. Jennifer, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Hello, I am the editor in chief for Black and Brown News. I wanted to reaffirm exactly what one of our journalists who just spoke said. BMBN is not BNBC. BNBC simply sponsors BMBN by allowing us to use paid content creation and editing software such as Canva. Our content is ours and ours alone. BMBN's team of investigators, journalists, writers, and editors have come together to bring news to the community at great risk to ourselves, a burden we were ready to carry. However, BNBC has been unjustly caught in the crossfire. This attack on BNBC staff only proves our point correct. There is an unfair bias against these community leaders, a bias that led town officials to attack local leaders that had no part in the writing of this newsletter. I am disgusted at the overt racism you all have displayed. Not one email was received by BMBN asking if BNBC staff were involved in the writing of this newsletter. We would have been happy to clarify that BNBC is not a part of BMBN. No member of BNBC personnel is affiliated with BMBN. I am so sorry to those BNBC staff that were targeted for the pain that this town has attempted to inflict upon you because of our newsletter exposing the truth of their schemes. But I must say, I am also glad that this has happened because this is irrefutable evidence that the town and its officials would jump at any opportunity to crucify and bury BNBC and any other organization or person attempting to shed light on the truth. Truth will always come out. I would focus on getting your own ducks in a row before attacking others because our team of journalists have many new names to look into. I encourage those town meeting members, we know your names, and others that have been spreading false information in an attempt to stop the creation of the Black and Brown Commission, something never before seen in Brookline, to continue to do so. Let the world see Brookline for what it truly is, a town that at its very core would rather eat its own tail in self-destruction than allow Black and Brown people to shape their own futures for the better. Thank you, BMBN.
At this time, there are two in-person attendees and 11 virtual attendees. I did receive a written public comment that I will read into the record now, and I am tagging myself. I said I would refrain from making additional public comments regarding this matter, but I must speak out. Today, I would like to express my deep concerns regarding Warren Article 19, which proposes the establishment of a Black and Brown Commission. While I believe passionately in the need for a Black and Brown Commission similar to the Brookline Commission on Women to foster inclusivity and equity within our community, I urge you not to support this Warren article. Over the past year, I have personally and professionally experienced and witnessed ongoing harassment and abuse from the individuals associated with this organization. Their actions extend beyond private interactions that have impacted members of our town government, organizations, and businesses, and specifically targeted Black and Brown people, including myself. With a heavy heart, I bring to your attention the latest example of this group's disturbing pattern of abusive behavior. On Friday, this group targeted me and other members of BIPOC community through a distressing newsletter. Those targeted included Kimberly Richardson and Deborah Brown, two of our community's most essential and respected Black women. This malicious newsletter published stolen photos of me from my job's website and disturbingly used them, overlaying jail bars on the pictures and encouraging vigilante actions against us. In total, five outstanding and influential BIPOC community leaders were targeted. This deeply dehumanizing and dangerous behavior has created an atmosphere of fear and insecurity for myself and many others, silencing those who oppose them. The hate this group spreads as they air their harmful ideologies perpetuates an environment of intolerance. Everyone who cares about social justice should unite against such hatred and instead create a community that embodies diversity, inclusivity, and respect for all. Approving this Warren article enables and enforces this continued misconduct. These individuals lack the necessary qualities and temperament to perform the duties required by the commission they wish to establish. Their nasty tempers, aggressive behavior, misogyny, and internalized racism profoundly concern our community's well-being. You are dedicated public servants. I implore you to thoroughly consider the consequences of supporting this Warren article. The recent attacks on town council members, valuable community leaders of color, and myself are unacceptable. Brookline cannot continue to enable and empower individuals who engage in such hurtful, hateful actions as it undermines the principles of justice, safety, and respect our community should uphold. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Zariah Carchian Jones. No one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, let's get into our meeting. Miss miscellaneous items. First is approval of the minutes from May 16 to 2023. Any edits or corrections?
I just wanted to follow up on those public comments.
Oh, okay.
Um, I want to thank Zaria for her comment there, and obviously just indicating the community and the team sympathy. We've always been excellent partners with BCF and to hear that an individual who has worked tirelessly for the benefit of the community has been repeatedly attacked in this way and feels, you can hear in her statement, just how visceral that damage she has taken is, is really just gutting. And so I want to make clear that we are a vibrant political community. There's room for strenuous disagreement. There's room to be rude to elected officials. There is room to be angry at elected officials and express that anger in very heightened ways. There is no issue with the use of heightened speech, provided that it is not a direct incitement to violence. Where there is an issue is in attacking private citizens and in behaving in manners that violate the town of Brooklines and federal, potentially federal and state anti-discrimination law. There is conditions in the ARCA riders, every ARCA recipient, that they not break those laws. And if any organization is found to have broken those laws, they will not proceed ARCA politically, period. I am frankly a little flustered and confused by this argument that, by anonymous people, that this news organization is not in some way related to this other organization. Okay, anonymous individuals. Given the information we have, it certainly seems that you had said, stated, you're sponsored by one organization, this organization. You use their software that they let you use. You publish a document that is now the subject of this concern using their resources. It is a message that has been authorized and sponsored by this organization. What did you think was going to happen? What do you think you're going to accomplish? Do you think you can hide behind this ridiculous argument of a corporate veil? It's not gonna happen. We need to be very, very cautious about anti-discrimination law, and we will be taking a hard look at that. Thank you.
Okay, we're not in public comment, but I'll let Susan Park speak briefly.
Thank you, Bernard. My name is Susan Park again. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 17, and I will say that because of question three and everything, you know, our success and winning, I too got a threatening email. It was, it was threatening. It was disturbing, and this will not be tolerated. And I remember during during the API hate crimes, Brookline made a declaration saying that they will not tolerate that kind of behavior. So for the record, I just wanted to put that out there, that harassment, threatening emails, it will not be tolerated.
Let me just add that let's not give them too much oxygen. Yeah, one of the problems we have here in Massachusetts is Massachusetts is next to Texas and the most hate incidents in the country. So we're sort of in the middle of that field, and you just have to be careful how we respond to it. Hate on the right is really no different than hate on whatever side some other groups are on. And as I've always said, hate is individual. But, you know, let's just, just not give them too much oxygen. Okay, moving on. Question of approving the minutes from May 16, 2023. I didn't, we didn't vote on that, but I did mention it. Any updates, corrections? More approval of May 16, 2023 minutes. All in favor? John?
Aye.
Marion is not here. Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chair vote, aye. Next, we have a bunch of miscellaneous items, and I'll go through them just for the record, but quickly. We have a question about application of to designate Brookline as an age-friendly community by the Council on Aging, two authorization to hire request, a community health manager and a health community services department, and civil engineer and DPW. Question approving a donation from Hartz Brookline in the amount of $2,000 to support the work of the Brookline Commission for the Arts, I believe that is. Question approving three extra work orders, one for snow work in the amount of $13,517, one for a people's trees in the amount of $32,837.50, and finally, one for school ground maintenance in the amount of $5,380. We have a question of a temporary alcohol beverages sales license to Karen Hassanfuss at Laura Anderson Auto Museum for a birthday party. Also a temporary wine and malt beverages sales license to Five LLC for the Brookline Coolidge Corner Hartz Festival, to be held June 3, 2023. Everyone should go there or attend. And that's the end of our miscellaneous items. Any questions or, yes?
I have one question for the town administrator with respect to the assistant civil engineer who has a reason for leaving his position with another community. This is more of a process data collection question. I don't have much of an explanation right now, but are we capturing the next level of detail as to why they're leaving? Is it respect dissatisfaction, compensation, opportunities for growth?
Yes, I know. It's a down time. It's been really hard to get that next level of information, determining where it is. Not just, you know, that they are leaving for other opportunities, but in the exit interview, why?
Are we doing that across all positions within, within the town, or is it kind of?
It's been, it's been department by department, but we've been encouraging that increase in data collection. Devin, what do you think we have there?
Do you want the specifics on this position?
No, no, I just wanted to ask the question. Are we collecting data across all departments as to why employees are turning over as part of an exit interview, and are we collecting those statistics to help inform what we're doing going forward for employee protection?
Yes, I mean, our human resources director is here. She told me that we're in the process of formalizing that. It has historically been a department by department process. Now that we are staffing up a human resources division, we want to make sure that that is standardized across.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, all in favor of the miscellaneous items? Please indicate by saying aye. John?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Chair vote, aye. Next, that's the Chief Pastor here. Good evening. We have a police promotions and authorization to hire request items. First, authorization to fire a one provisional lieutenant and one civil service sergeant in the police department. And secondly, approval of promotions for Sergeant Alan Gusty to the rank of lieutenant and Officer David Chung to the rank of sergeant. Chief Pastor, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me and for taking these items under consideration. These names that I'll read before you are, I'm asking you to promote them. The vacancies were created upon the retirement of Lieutenant John Canny back in March. So the provisional lieutenant's position has been vacant since then. Thank you to Lieutenant Hayes, who has been filling, filling in while still tending to his other duties. So Sergeant Alan Gusty, I'm asking to have him promoted to rank of lieutenant, and that's provisional, which just means that a department, our department has exhausted our civil service list for the rank of lieutenant. So Mass General Law, Chapter 31, Section 15 allows me to provisionally promote a permanent employee in the next lower rank. So we had anybody with a year in rank of sergeant that was interested, submit their names. We conducted interviews. Sergeant Alan Gusty has been a member of our department since 2006. He has experience in working in three out of the four operational divisions, so patrol detectives and community service. He's held the rank of sergeant since October of 2019. He served honorably as a street supervisor, and he's filled in as the commanding officer as needed, most recently on the overnight shift. Sergeant Gusty has volunteered for various additional responsibilities during his career. He's an MPTC certified firearms instructor, a team leader of the department's special response team, and a member of our honor guard. Sergeant Gusty holds a bachelor's degree in public administration from Miami University and a master's from Curry in criminal justice. Next, Officer David Chung for promotion to the rank of sergeant. Officer David Chung has been a member of our department since 2005. For seven years, he worked as the department's animal control officer. In that time, he enhanced the functionality and efficiency of that role by reviewing past procedures and introducing new protocols. In that time, he enhanced the functionality and efficiency of that role by reviewing past procedures and introducing new protocols and best practices to his fellow officers. With regard to animal related calls. In addition to fulfilling many of those obligations and opportunities. Officer Chung made himself available to assist patrol with calls for service and assignments outside of his assigned scope of work. Earning the respect of his peers and demonstrating his commitment to the town and to our department. Officer Chung holds a bachelor's from U Mass and a master's degree from Curry College, also in criminal justice, and he's fluent in Cantonese.
Thank you. Any questions from board? I know many of us have uh, had uh, brought Sir Chung come in and get rid of bats and other animals at our homes. We appreciate that.
He's good with people as well.
Right. Very good with people. Um, okay, any other questions? Uh, if not, I'll move approval of the uh, operation authorization to hire request. And the promotion as indicated by Chief Pastor, all in favor, John?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Uh, Paul?
Aye.
And chair both aye. Thank you.
If I could actually clarify one point, uh, so the authorization to hire is actually um, an additional request. This authorization to hire was approved, I believe, back in March, early April. Uh, Lieutenant Amidola has since left us to become the chief of the Carlisle Police Department. So this authorization, a higher request that's in front of you tonight is to fill the vacancies left by his. Um, by his promotion out there in Carlisle.
So they're separate items.
Correct.
Yeah, we don't, you know, it's fine if we voted them together.
Very good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, warrant articles. Oh, fun part of the meeting. Um, further review and possible reconsideration or vote on the warrant article. For two thousand twenty-three annual town meetings or an article two approval of collective bargaining agreements. Uh, we discussed this in, in executive session and um, unless there's any further discussion, I'd like Paul, Paul vote.
Which would previously maybe read, read into the record, what we're talking about, the, the file.
Okay, um, this is approval of uh, a negotiated agreement with the fire union. Um, for uh, years, two thousand, what, twenty-one?
Two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-four.
Right.
Free year deal. So we'll go through the next fiscal year, which will be, it will be the subject of not only retroactive, but part of this budget as well. Which is why we moved the budget back and are dealing with all these issues. This is a rec, you know, recommendation was to the, the fire union, which we thank for, the firefighters union, which we thank for their diligent negotiations on this. Uh, has authorized us to share that decision. Uh, they will be taking it to their membership this week. Uh, pending their approval, your approval at town meetings, who will become the operative contract for the next fiscal year. Um, it contains a number of, you know, uh, uh, of good housekeeping policies in addition to substantial uh, raises for the firefighters. Uh, including back pay. Um, it includes uh, you know, the uh, for the first time, the ability to rely on merit in some instances. And uh, assessing candidates for promotion to captain and deputy chief, which is a huge, huge benefit. Uh, and one that we have not had in the past. Uh, it corrects a number of issues regarding the chief's ability to uh, ensure general orders are issued and maintained as the highest level of policy. Uh, to correct issues regarding injury on duty use, um, to ensure that uh, the use of deputy chiefs vacation times included. Uh, in account of whose absentee any given day. A lot of this is really excellent quality of life stuff that the bargaining team, of course, years really hammered out in individual agreements before coming to this. So I want to congratulate bargaining team, Michael Downey, Anne Braga, Jen Stallion, uh, Melissa Goff, and the whole team. Uh, and you know, the folks who came in, uh, even towards the end of the process, like Charlie Young, uh, who have been, you know, crushing the numbers and really pulling this across the vision. And so thank you to the bargaining team, thank you to the union. Uh, the other aspect of article two that we're asking you to revisit uh, is the funding to the police contract. Um, we believe after discussions internally that it's important uh, for you to vote through full funding for the police contract. Bring you in line with the advisory committee uh, as positioned on this. So in voting, reopening article two, we would ask you to approve the fire union contract and approve full amount of the J L M C award for the police. Uh, and the rationale behind this is uh, we think it's just a most prudent course of action as we continue to contest this issue with posts. Uh, it also allows us more flexibility in negotiating with the union to ensure that uh, we might come to some alternative arrangement at front, uh, which is our hope. Um, so we will, uh, we just ask that you reopen that to, and authorize that full amount, bring you in line with the advisory committee on that.
Okay, so um, we have to reopen more article two. Um, so I move that we reopen one article two to um, make these adjustments. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Welcome.
Aye.
Uh, Paul.
Aye.
And chair both aye. So I move, why don't we do it separately? Um, and move approval of the fire union's contract negotiated uh, between town and fire union. Um, all in favor, John?
Aye.
Uh, Michael?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And chair both aye. Next, uh, I uh, move approval of the um. Decision by the United Labor Management Committee, uh, with respect to the lease uh, contract. Uh, uh, for the full amount of that award, uh, reserving the right, or reserving our option to uh, challenge the um. Connection of uh, certain amount of that to the post commission. Um, or giving a post commission stipend. Um. But otherwise, the full amount of the award, uh, we were approving. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And chair both aye. Okay, uh, warrant article seven, annual budget appropriations.
Probably dealing with that. We'll, we'll have a memo for you and your package for tomorrow. Um, you know, we, now that you've approved these additional contracts. There is obviously additional things that we need to approve to balance out to give them to budget. So we'll provide recommendations to you for immediate harm.
Okay, warrant article thirteen, create a new article three point one two A of the town's general bylaw. Establish an office of housing stability. Uh, we already dealt with that and decided to refer that to town administrator. Um, that are, if, if you recall, is there any uh, desire to reopen that warrant article?
I, I would like to speak about that, John. I uh, spent a considerable amount of time speaking with the petitioner uh, yesterday. And um, I believe that C two and S is reconsidering uh, their recommendation on Thursday. I believe Thursday morning at eight A M, I think is the, is the end date, I don't know if that news got out. Um, so what I would like to do is have us table reconsideration, but believe that as, as an option. Um, should the petitioner and C two and S come to some uh, level of consensus on what we do. Okay.
We will. Uh, article, um, article fifteen. Um. Amendment article five point nine of the town's general bylaw to clarify and update votes previously taken regarding. The stretch code and specialized energy code and add fossil fuel free restrictions. In accordance with the National Department of Energy Resources demonstration project. You want to kind of within this for quite a while.
Yes, and this, it doesn't get any less complicated, unfortunately. You know, this is quick, quick movement on these things means there's a lot of ping pong in, in, in regulations. And again, D O E R has been tasked with um, implementing these new uh, building codes, has not historically developed building codes. So they're um, they're sometimes as in the dark as, as we are with this stuff. So initially, there is a proposal on the table, the proposed language here was developed uh, by the town based on model language by D O E R. We subsequently told that some of it, that, that language needs to be uh, just needs to be the model language. It can't be changed. Uh, and then any additional changes, you know, deviations from the model language will require approval by D O E R. They really want to standardize this pilot. They do not want ten towns to have ten substantially different building codes. Then all try to accomplish the same thing. So, you know, one of the big issues that we've seen here was seeing what's the definition of uh. Uh, 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 significant change, right? How do we, how do we define when this building code applies to, for example. A two unit structure where you're renovating, you know, uh, one unit plus a space, a part of the common area. Does that trigger the fifty-one percent requirement? So a lot of time spent in advisory committee and elsewhere, trying, trying to figure out uh, how to uh, how, how to square that circle. And make sure that we had some clarity in front. And what D O E R has said, my understanding is that um. No, you can't, you certainly can't change the definitions that we've set out. Um, and there's still some open discussion as to whether or not uh, you can uh, change meaningfully the text of the, the proposed, the model by law. Um, certainly though, they've said is that if you want to change the text of the proposed by law, it's got to be approved by us first. Um, so the uh, current uh, I'm just, I believe, although I'm, you know, the building commissioner, of course, from that here. Um, was that um, we're going to try and go back to the original model by law. Um, rather than use the language that we have, that we developed.
So what we had come, I think last one, I think was last time, it was by so quickly.
Yeah.
We had the contention of brain, uh, revised warrant article to us, and we reconsidered the fire.
Right.
Um, and I think it was trying to deal with this issue of building versus unit and fifty-one percent.
Right.
Are you saying now that there's guidance to actually revert back to the original language that makes this issue confusing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, are we ready to do that?
No, um, I would, I would want the building commissioner here to explain this in more details. I just want to give you an update on where we are on this. Um, so when he's, he's unfortunately uh, uh, ill, uh, so I want to make sure that he's here to talk in more detail about it. So, yeah. But I want to give you the overview of where we are and why we are where we are. Um, I don't, I don't think it's. I think the concern there was not so much risk as confusion, right? There's this issue of um, right, the fifty-one percent in one of all those things. Um, so I want to make sure that we have an understanding of what the limits are already are to kind of work collaboratively with the state to develop a version of this. Uh, because the state really wants as much as possible.
But we just asked briefly, we can wait for the building. So if we're not allowed to change it.
Hmm.
And we have to wait for the D O E R.
Yeah.
To change it.
Yeah.
Can we adopt something at town meeting before there's a standardization of this?
You could adopt something. The question is whether or not the state will accept it. Um, the state may tell you, come back, you know, back in November. You know, or, or call, call a special town meeting and fix it. Um, that's, that's the list.
So we can approve what we have and then the attorney general in collaboration may say, right, no good. Come back in November.
Right, and then, you know, we want to make sure that we're being a good part of D O E R on this, given how candidly how stressed they are. Um, they're, they're under a lot of pressure with this pilot coming so soon on the heels of the uh, specialized building code. Uh, you know, they've been tasked, really, you know, Brookline has been the leader in this, right? Has been pushing state to move in this direction and now the legislature has agreed and made this push in the last two years. We've had three different substantial changes to building codes, uh, and this is the third. Uh, so we just want to make sure that whatever we, whatever recommendation we make to you on language to adopt is language the community is comfortable with and the D O E R is.
So moving on to the final warrant article. Susan, you're ready for you? Kidding. Uh, warrant article seventeen, uh, men article eight point three seven point two of the town's general bylaws to change marijuana to cannabis. And permit to additional storefront cannabis retail licenses for actual applicants. My recollection is that the last week or the week before last, we voted the advisory committee um. Um, amendment which uh, kept the change of marijuana to cannabis, but did not add any additional license. Correct, is there any uh, desire to reopen that?
At the time, when we had the review, we knew the petitioner was going to file a motion where we can have it. Now the petition motion has been filed, that's supplement one, um, where they provide for one additional license spread. So if the board wanted to reconsider, that would be the motion that you wrote down.
And did the advisory committee approve that?
I don't believe that.
Yeah, they, 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 they did not move from their red protection.
Any desire to reopen?
They didn't take it up.
No, they, they, they took it up and they said, we're not, we're, we're not changing. We, we're not going to take a vote yes or no on this motion. I believe, they just said, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're happy with where we are.
So forgive me, does that mean that they are at still two additional?
No, they are in zero.
Oh, they are in zero.
Change, change, change marijuana to cannabis, but otherwise zero devices.
Exactly where we are. Okay, any desire to reopen this?
Reopen it based on our?
To, to, to uh, consider the amended uh, warrant article uh, from the petitioner, which would add one additional license.
Yeah, I, I would love to have an opportunity before that.
Uh, okay, let's vote on, reopen uh, this warrant article. Uh, all in favor of reopening article seventeen? Um, John?
Aye.
Mike?
Uh, well, as courtesy uh, of both to reopen it, like, don't have to vote with a, with a chain.
Okay, well, no, and uh. I'm gonna, as a courtesy, I'll reopen it too. Um, so we'll reopen it. Uh, and uh, now the question is whether we are going to um. Uh, um, support of the petitioner's revised amendment or revised warrant article. Would uh, add to, uh, one cannabis door to uh, the like available one. Um, any discussion of that? No, on favor, John? On favor of adopting the petitioner's revised warrant article?
Uh, aye.
Uh, Mike?
No.
Paul?
No.
And chair both, no. Okay, um, next, select board committee assignments. Um, so I do not have my computer, um, because I don't have electrical outlet. So um, uh, from, from memory, Devin and I went through the list of committee assignments. Identified those that uh, those committees that require a select board member. Um, and those committees that were uh, on our list, but are committees of other organizations, like the guy, the, uh, moderator. Um, and she can pull it up. And this is uh, actually a preliminary list, but I wanted to get, get this started.
The installed version would be really better, just the, the whole, the, the.
Now you can see the backend of our operation.
Well, we've been able to see that for a while.
Yeah, when, when it's a word, people on it, all of the.
Yeah, okay, so this, this is the list that Devin and I came up with. Um, and uh, we've gotten some comments from people. Um, we made any changes? Okay, so this is um.
I think, I have one uh, question.
Yeah.
I, I think I'm um, assigned to the uh, uh, with the small business development committee. Uh, oh, I'm not, okay, so you switched that. Cause I was.
Oh, the clerkler.
Okay, all right, that's fine, cause I know that John was interested in that and I, you know, I, I was surprised to see my name there, yeah, but.
Any other um, comments or questions or complaints?
The only question I have is, you know, how chiseled into stone is this for how long?
Chiseled into butter. Okay, if, if people want to switch committees, um, you know, and the issue, and, and, you know, there are a couple uh, there that I think we need to revisit. Uh, in the next couple of months, but you know, this is the start. I just want to make sure that um, we cleaned up the assignment list. The, I think you're new on the board and Heather is no longer here.
Yes.
Um, and um.
And I understand that I'm a recipient, that's the new guy, the new person. Well, you haven't actually done the short end of the stick.
Right, yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um, does this speak to the uh, the question of whether, uh, of the council partnership uh, assignments?
Uh, no, we still have uh, me and um, John, Mike, and it's that. But I think that is one um, assignment I'd like to revisit over the next, you know, two weeks. Um, but I don't want to do it right now.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, so um, I'm of approval of the uh, select board three assignments. Uh, all in favor, John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And chair both aye. And so ends our meeting. Eight twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three.
See you.
Now we go to our next meeting. Now we go to our next meeting.
See if they're all words.
I'm feeling right.
Okay, thank you.